Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment. Chairman Abelloni, will you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on Municipal Bolton Board and Municipal Website. All notices are filed with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board, and this meeting's being recorded by AP-TV, and I ask everyone with a cellphone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting. Roll call.
Wendy Glassman is recused for the first application. Daniel Harris.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Jill Potter is recused from both applications. Natalie Passerini.
Here.
J.J. Hall.
Here.
Vice Chair Scully is recused from the first application, and Chairman Abelloni.
Here. All right, we have a little bit of housekeeping at first. The first resolution will hold off until John is with us. I make a motion to approve the resolution, to adopt the resolution of 1206 Dunleavy Street. I'll second if I'm eligible.
You are?
Okay.
And, uh... Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
J.J. Hall?
Yes.
And Chairman Abelloni?
Yes. I need a motion for 301-8, as I'm recused.
Make a motion to approve 301-8.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh...Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
J.J. Hall?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna move on to the minutes.
Okay. Um, so can I do the minutes all at once, Jack, or do I have to do them individual?
Unless anybody has any questions about any of them, you can do it.
All right, so I make a motion to approve all the minutes of the various meetings from January through May. I'll second.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about any of them?
I did have one, um, on the minutes for March 11th. Um, just only one comment, I believe it was the last comment on minutes, if we could amend. Intent was borne out of hardship during COVID. Um, I don't believe I mentioned intent. If that was it, I believe it was just that.
I'll go check on that one. No problem. Okay. Got it. Okay.
Roll call.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
J.J. Hall?
Yes.
Chairman Abelloni?
Yes. All right, first application is up, is 97 Sunset Drive. Uh, Ms. Torres and Ms. Grossman.
Mr. Chairman, I've looked at the notices for this application. Your couple form and your jurisdiction proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Servico. And Mr. Cromer.
Good evening, Board members, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Carlton Cromer. I'm the attorney for the applicants, Ms. Grossman and Mrs. Torres, who own a property that is on Sunset Drive. The back of the property faces Deal Lake, the front of the property faces Sunset Drive. The applicant is looking to build a garage on their property. The garage is a small, one-car garage. The garage is going to fit within the character of the neighborhood. Other properties in this neighborhood have a similarly located garage. The location of the garage is toward the front of the house to the side. This is really the only location where a garage can fit. The property is small, it's undersized. It also is not a rectangular shape, it's a fan shape, meaning that it's narrow towards the street and then fans out towards the, um, Deal Lake side. So the property has some unique characteristics that other properties...
Let's get into the substance of the application before we...
Before I...
Before you roll the testimony.
I sometimes like to have two rolls. But, so that's the summary of it. We're looking to put a garage. First witness that I'm gonna call is Ms. Grossman, one of the applicants.
Please raise your hand. Donna Miller. You saw the square firm, the testimony about to give is not, it'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Jean Grossman, J.E.A.N., last name Grossman, G.R.O.S.S.M.A.N.
Thank you. Donna?
Donna Miller, board planner.
Okay. Your witnesses.
Okay, Ms. Grossman, are you an owner of the property on Sunset?
Yes.
And what's the address?
9 Sunset Drive.
How long have you lived there?
Three years.
Are you familiar with the neighborhood since you've lived there for three years?
Yes.
Let's talk about the property. What faces the backside of the property?
The lake.
Okay.
Deal Lake.
And the front side faces Sunset Drive, correct?
That's correct.
Is the shape of the property narrow?
Yes, it's wider in the front on Sunset Drive and then goes narrow to the back on Deal Lake.
And would you say that that's an irregular-shaped property?
I do.
The location of the house relative to the right boundary line, do you know the space between the left side of the house?
Yeah.
Excuse me, the right side of the house and the boundary line?
Yeah, the side porch is, uh, four feet from the, uh, the neighbor to the right of us.
The boundary line?
The boundary line.
And do you see that kind of setback throughout the, um, street? Do you have similar setbacks?
Yes, we have no setback on the other side of the house, on the left side.
So you asked about the rest of the street?
The rest of the street is the same?
If you have that knowledge, if you don't have it...
I have the knowledge. Every, every house, because the street is not straight, it's on a curvature, so every lot is, uh, is...
Tight?
Is not, is tight and not regular. They're all irregular lots.
Is there currently a garage on the property?
No.
Was there a garage on the property at some point?
Yes.
Is the location that you're proposing to put the garage the same location where the garage was previously?
Yes.
And when you purchased the property, was there a garage?
No.
I'm sorry. Um, have you chosen a location for the garage?
Yes.
Have you considered other locations on the property for the garage?
There's no other location the garage would fit, uh, in adjacent to the curb cut for the driveway.
Is there any space to put the garage in the back?
No.
Is there any space to put the garage in either side of the home?
No.
Are you looking to locate the garage in the front of the home?
Yes.
Okay, and what side of the home or what side of the property are you looking to locate the garage?
It'll be on the right side when you're facing from Sunset Drive.
And will the garage align with the existing home? Existing porch?
Yeah, it's between the front porch and the side porch.
Um, the distance between the porch and the boundary line is four feet, correct?
The side, the current side porch.
And will the distance between the proposed garage and the boundary line be four feet, too?
Yes.
So will the garage align with the existing footprint of the home on the side?
Yes.
Okay. Are there other homes on Sunset Drive that you've noticed that also have their garage in the front yard and to the side?
Every house that has a gar, well, yes, four out of nine or five out of nine houses have garages in the front.
Would the construction of the garage affect any sightlines that you anticipate from the street?
No, just ours from our side porch. We won't be able to see the front of that.
Do you anticipate that the design of the garage is going to match the existing house?
Yes.
Did the narrow shape of your property affect your decision to locate the garage in the front to the side?
Yes.
When you purchased the home, the house was on the lot, correct?
Yes.
Will you use the garage for parking a car?
Yes.
Is the garage going to be placed right at the end of the existing driveway?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be right next to the side porch and the front porch, in between those two.
So that once when you drive into the driveway, you could drive into the garage, correct?
Correct.
Do you believe that the addition of the garage will enhance the character of the neighborhood?
Yes.
Do you anticipate any negative consequences from adding the garage to your property?
No, we've done a topography report, so we know the drainage will be the same.
And you're gonna continue to use the property as a single-family home?
That's correct.
I don't have any further questions.
Did you testify earlier that this is an undersized lot?
Yes.
It's not correct.
It's a regular...
It's not a regular lot, but it's not...
It's actually oversized.
It's oversized, okay. I just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah.
I, I meant to say it's a narrow lot because it fans. Okay, I apologize.
It's a regular...
Well, if it were an undersized lot, it would, it would be more challenging, so I just wanted to clear the record for that. I have no other question.
And to Mr. Cromer's point, um, the lot width along the street is only 40 feet. Normally it would be 50 feet. It has excessive depth, so that's why it's oversized, but not...
Typical.
Typical.
Got it.
It's also a big house. Um, I have a, does anybody else have any question? Okay, so I just want to clarify, um, Ms. Grossman testified that four out of five houses have a garage?
All the houses have a garage. On your question was specifically on the front, front side, so...
So all, all but one of those is actually attached?
Yes.
Integrated into the design of the house, not as a separate building?
Yeah.
Only one is a separate building.
One's detached and one, and then the rest are attached. Um, do you guys, do you have the pictures?
We could show them pictures. Would you like to talk to them?
And then the other thing, it's in their package, right?
Yeah.
The other point was that, um, this is not actually the location of the former garage. Uh, the former garage was actually under that side porch.
My understanding was it was, it was attached to the house at one time.
Sort of under the house.
It was under and it went down. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it was behind the front building line, it was...
So this is not the same type of garage, Ms. Grossman?
Not the exact same. I didn't say it was the same...
But it's also not the same location.
You said it was the same location, but that's not true.
It, it, it actually is the same location because the garage, it's not the same size or the same type of garage, but it's in the same location. So the driveway hasn't moved, and the old garage used to drive down the driveway and into the garage and down below the porch.
Under the porch.
Under the porch.
Under the porch.
And, but the garage stuck out from the porch, like it was, uh, there. It wasn't just the deck with the garage door there. And then this will be in the same spot, but it will extend out because it's detached. So I'm sorry if that was confusing. It's in the, at the end of the driveway. It will extend farther because...
How far from the front of the property line is the garage starting?
Uh, 40-plus feet? I don't know.
30, sir? The location?
Yeah.
I think it's 32.
From the start, no, where it starts, it ends at, I think it ends at 32. So the setback from the sidewalk to the front of the garage, it, I measured it tonight, is, it's almost 32 feet.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, can you get the survey? Because we have it on that.
Mm-hmm. You can roll it, but we could talk to it more.
Well, you, would you like her to review the survey?
You mean from the setback?
If they have questions about it.
Yeah.
Pictures, pictures worth a thousand words.
Do you have somebody who's gonna provide professional testimony about the site layout and the dimensions of the garage?
The architect will.
Okay, maybe that's, yeah, more in his, uh...
Realm.
Realm.
It will be, I could tell you that it will be, so where the house ends today, the garage will extend past the house four to nine inches. So it'll be, the setback will be nine inches shorter than it is today from the sidewalk. And Paul will tell you how far, exactly what the setback would be.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Grossman.
Yeah.
Any further questions for Ms. Grossman? Anyone in the public that would like to question Ms. Grossman's testimony, just what she testified to? Not comment on her testimony, but question her testimony. Thank you, Ms. Grossman.
Okay, next witness, witness is the architect, Mr. Amel Chanko.
Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Sir, please raise your hand. I'm the square firm, the testimony about to give is not, it'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it for us. Please state your name and spell it.
Yes, it's Paul Amel Chanko, A.M.L.C.H.E.N.K.O.
Thank you. Your witnesses.
Okay, Mr. Amel Chanko, are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
How long have you been licensed?
Since 1980.
Have you ever appeared before a board?
Uh, many times, I've testified throughout the state of New Jersey professionally.
We accept your credentials, Mr. Amel Chanko.
Pardon me, sir?
We accept your credentials. Thank you.
Your license is currently in good standing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Did you propose a plan related to this property regarding a construction of a garage?
I did.
Okay, are those your plans on the easel over there?
They are.
Would you walk us through those plans and talk about the size of the garage and the location of it?
Sure.
We'll call this A1, please. Is there a date on your plans?
Pardon me?
Is there a date on your plans?
There is.
Yeah, have it, please.
9/20/25.
Thank you.
The garage that we proposed because of some difficult pre-existing conditions of the configuration of the existing home, uh, side yards, things like that, we had to contend with. So basically, the result was that we proposed a garage that's 20 feet deep and 11 foot, 7 inches wide.
Is the size of the garage sufficient to fit a car?
Yes, the, the side walls are constructed of, uh, the 4-inch, uh, 2-by-4 construction, very similar to most of the homes in the area.
Would the outermost wall match or align with the existing footprint of the side of the home, which is the porch now?
Uh, yes, it will. However, it is four inches closer to the front property line than the existing home is. The existing home is 32 feet, 4 inches. The garage, the proposed garage will be 32 feet from the property line, from the front property line. So it'd be an increase of four inches difference.
Visually, have you given any thought to the shape of the roof, whether it matches the shape of the roof for the existing home?
We wanted to keep it, well, in keeping cosmetically, there's an existing, uh, story and a half, uh, addition that protrudes to 32 foot, 4 inches in the front yard, which is a den, it has a gable roof and, uh, three windows, and we're going to match the same siding and we're going to have the same configuration of a gable roof to match the existing home. The, the garage will be 15 feet maximum in height. It'll have a garage door. It'll have a passage door to the side, the one window to the southern, uh, exposure, and the wall to the north to our, our neighbor will be a blank wall with siding.
Do you believe that the addition of the garage will enhance the visual parts of the property?
I, I believe so, just in terms of quality of life, uh, you know, to have a home that size without a place to park a car conveniently is, uh, is not in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, actually. I believe that it would fit right in, uh, cosmetically, physically with the rest of the neighborhood.
Have you given any thought to whether a garage could be located on either side yard or in the back?
There's no location available, uh, on this property without exacerbating, uh, all the variants of setbacks, things like that, and there's no access to, for a drive to have the garage located on the riverside or on the lakeside.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you, what's the date on the plan?
I'm sorry?
What's the date on the plan?
The last revision was 9/20/25.
Okay, we don't have that. Um, was there something that you changed between the...
I think it was the width of the garage was changed, was it not?
No, 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 we had that on our set.
The only thing added for that revision was, right, the dimension of the height of the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify that.
Thank you.
15 foot.
Donna, Donna, we have paper sets of that, but not digital.
So you didn't get digitals?
They were dropped off at the office. Oh, yeah, that's what it is.
Personally, I'm not sure how a garage enhances the character of a neighborhood. I understand that a garage may offer the place to put your car, but it may not necessarily enhance the neighborhood. Right now, I'm sure...
I didn't testify that it would enhance the neighborhood.
But that's the question he, that Mr. Cromer keeps asking.
Actually, did I?
And so I, I, I kind of disagree with that concept, Mr. Cromer, but, um, a garage doesn't enhance anything other than put your car away.
So what I'm pointing out is that it enhances it in the sense that it makes it consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. There's testimony...
Is it consistent, though? A, a, as, as it was testified, this is only one of two houses, then, that would have a garage that would be set up this way. So it, it's not exactly the same, per se, correct?
There are other properties that have the same setup. I think the testimony has been that there are at least two. Every property is going to have...
But they were, they're, they're attached garages. This is not an attached garage. This is not something that was part of this house. This is adding this to the house, to the property, and I understand the, the, why it's being asked for. I'm just trying to say that it's not necessarily the same in the rest of the neighborhood. There may be another house that way that has a garage on the driveway like this, but I don't particularly think it enhances the neighborhood at all.
Okay, maybe enhancement is the wrong word, and maybe I'm more looking for a line that is saying that it's consistent with what others have in the neighborhood.
Is it consistent, though? Is that consistent, or is it just something that another house has?
Other houses have. I think the testimony so far has been that every house has a garage. Every house may not have...
That's not true. Not every house has a garage.
On, on this particular street?
Yeah, from the aerial, I mentioned, Mr. Chairman, there are quite a few. I think the testimony was, if I'm not mistaken, there was five attached to the...
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm not talking specifically Sunset Drive. I'm saying, he's saying every house has a garage. That's not true.
Well, yeah, their testimony has been that on our street...
Right, I, I understand.
But isn't the house next door not have a garage, or does it go all the way to the, does their driveway go to the back?
Most houses have a garage.
Time out.
Please do not answer questions.
Okay, sorry, tree. All right, so that goes into a garage. So I'm, I'm looking at Google Street View from this past September, and, um, starting at the eastern end of the block where it intersects with Comstock Street, um, that's a curve, um, that house that's right on the corner, um, is a two-story colonial, probably from the 70s, and there's a one-car garage that is placed in front of the house, um, but lines up with the front porch of that house.
Is that light blue?
Um, maybe. Mint.
Okay, that was the house that I had in mind that was very similar to what, um, we are proposing. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to be cute with words, I would agree with you that no two houses are gonna have the exact same location, but what's you...
No, 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 so the point we're making is that there's that one, and then 13 Sunset Drive, which is the totally other end of, of the street, uh, before it curves back, uh, to Sunset Ave, um, there's, there's one other house, 13, that has the one-car garage in front of the principal front building line.
I'm aware of the street.
All the other houses, the garage is integrated into the design of the structure.
Into the house.
It doesn't sit out in front of the house, it's part of that front building wall, um, it, the, you know, the main roof of the house is over it, uh, which one is this one? Yeah, that one's a, this one is a two-story, you know, there's one, there's living space above this garage, um, same thing with, uh, which one is this? Is this five? Sorry, I'm not seeing the street number on all of them. Three. Um, this is a newer house, um, but, you know, it's, um, again, not like a separate structure. Uh, I don't mean to, I don't mean this in a derogatory way, but, you know, sort of pasted, placed separately in front of the existing house. So I, and I get it, we can't, I, I think based on, uh, the conditions on the property and the design of the existing house, I don't believe there's a way to integrate a garage structure that way, except the way it was originally, which was kind of under the side porch. So, and again, that's a function of...
Why was that original garage removed?
Okay, I asked that question to the client, and she could corroborate what I said.
But wait, but it wasn't...
It wasn't testified, too, if I could go to her.
No, 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 no. Was it there when they first bought the house? Wasn't it already gone?
It was already filled in because there was flooding issues. So it was kind of like the way that I imagined it and the way I saw it, and she has a picture to show the old setup, it was a ramp that was going down, and that ramp went down so low that it kept on flooding. And his fix for that was to raise the floor so that it stopped flooding. And to add to the planner's opinion about inability to integrate, the architect, too, had considered whether integrating the garage to the home was feasible, but you didn't see that as being possible.
We always... We always look at that initially, yes, just for the convenience of living, but because of the configuration, as Miller says. The access to the front porch, the existing floor height of the home is approximately four and a half feet higher than the gray level or the garage in this particular case. So it would be fairly awkward.
What about how the covered porch's width is more narrow than the garage? You'd have to intrude more into the setback if the garage was integrated into the house, correct?
It would exacerbate the side yard setback, yes. Yep. And we needed to, because of the existing configuration of the covered porch on the north side, which is open below where the old garage was, they would need access to that area. And if we, if we located the garage, that north wall, if you will, and brought it up tight to that porch, there'd be no access from that area. There'll be birds, leaves, things like that that couldn't be cleaned out. So that was another consideration.
So you feel this is the only way it could be done?
Yes, sir. Yeah. We tried a couple of different ways, but primarily it's the front yard setback, which is such a sensitive issue that we didn't even consider bringing it any further than our four-inch dimension ahead of the existing house.
And is the size of the garage dictated by the usability of the garage? In other words, is it possible to make it smaller and still fit a car in? Or are these the minimum dimensions needed for a car to be parked in there?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we use a dimension of six and a half feet with the width of a car. The owners have a smaller car, but we felt that this was going to offer them the convenience. But we still, in order to fit the garage, we had to marry it, if you will, to the existing front porch where there'll be a few more gymnastics in terms of construction, in terms of timing beside the garage to those steps.
Any further questions for Mr. Amolchenko?
How far is the actual approachment of the proposed structure into the front yard setback area?
I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't hear.
How far is the actual approachment of the proposed structure into the front setback area?
Four inches.
It's not in the front yard setback.
Okay, it's not?
No.
Okay.
It's an accessory structure in the front yard.
Okay, I get, okay, all right. But I wanted to know the dimension. Okay, I got it.
Yeah, no, they have a setback of, it's going to be like 31 feet and change from the shortest dimension.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then it requires a back is 25 feet. That's it.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else on the board or professionals?
Can you please just confirm? The garage is two feet away from the house and door porch? That is a two-foot space?
The rear wall.
The rear wall.
The rear wall is two feet, which we felt was going to be an absolute minimum for somebody to squeeze in there with a rake or something like that.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is that paved or is, is that paved? What are you planning on doing with that structure?
No, it'll be grass or gravel, something like that.
And there's no door, there's no pedestrian door in this garage?
No.
The person parking the car has to come out of the garage door and then it shuts.
Correct.
My understanding is you had to widen the garage in order for a car door to open?
Yes.
Yes. This is absolutely the minimum size garage in order to be able to.
And that would allow both sides of the, on right and left side of the car, for both doors to open?
Yes.
Yeah, it would probably be a situation where somebody would have to get out prior to fully into the garage.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like you're going to swing the doors open. It's enough to get out of the car.
Pulling the belly sort of thing and just squeeze through.
Any further questions for Mr. Amolchenko? Anyone in the public for Mr. Amolchenko's testimony, just for his testimony? Questions to his testimony?
Oh, questions?
Questions, no, not comments, questions. Is there any allowance done for gathering the water that would be additionally added to the property?
Yes, we do have a plan, which is stipulated on the front of our drawing here. There will be stormwater runoff from the two gutter sizes. They would come down through leaders. They would be interconnected to a six-inch, what we call perforated pipe. It would be set in 12 inches of gravel. It'll be sloped towards the curve, towards the gutter of the roof.
I appreciate that, Mr. Amolchenko. Thank you. That's not usually your bailiwick.
We encounter all kinds of differentiation from time to time.
Anything further for Mr. Amolchenko? All right, Mr. Cromer.
Any comments?
We're not there yet.
Do you have any more witnesses?
Do you have any more?
No more witnesses. Okay.
I'll open it up for comments from the public. Murray, can you run the clock? You have four minutes to make a comment, either for or against this application.
Yes, come, please go to the mic, yes. You're up.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's your turn. Sir, since you're going to give a comment, please raise your right hand. Psalm swear affirm, the testimony you have given this matter with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address, please.
My name is Daniel Todd Rush, D-A-N-I-E-L-T-O-D-D-R-U-S-H.
And your address?
5 Sunset Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey, 07712.
Go ahead. Go right there.
I'd like to comment on a couple of things. One of the things would be the aesthetics. Now, before they bought this house, three people before that put an addition on. So now the house is like this with an addition. So when they put the garage in, it'll be symmetrical. It'll be like if you were, you know, a horse stall. So you'd have, it would look, it would look like a horseshoe. It would look good, it would enhance it. And as far as being too close to the street, my house is much closer to the street than near a garage would be, as is Peter's. So I don't see any problem. And I was, I've been, also, I've been there for 47 years. So I've been on this block a long time. I've seen everything. And when the Nobles put their garage in front, which is what they're going to do, I don't know if anybody ever complained about it then. And that doesn't enhance the house as much as this would. This would make the house look better, in my opinion. And I don't see, I don't see any problem at all. That's all, I guess that's, do you have any questions about the enhancement? Because that seemed to be a big deal and I think it's going to beautify the house.
Just continue your comments.
Unless you're done.
They don't really.
Unless you're done.
I'm done, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't let me talk to you. I'm having surgery. Sir, please raise your right hand, right hand. Psalm swear affirm, the testimony you have given this matter with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address.
Sure, my name is Peter Mertens, M-E-R-T-E-N-S, and my address is 11 Sunset Drive.
Thank you.
I live directly to the left of Jean and Maria's property. I've been there two years. I actually looked at their house three years ago to buy. And one of the things I did not buy was because it didn't have a garage. And when I look at their property and I look at the design of the house and I look at the design that's been proposed here, it's, in my opinion, enhances the property. I would far, as a neighbor, would far much more look at that garage than the driveway with cars in it. I think it fits into the character of the neighborhood. There is only one house on the entire curve of Comstock and Sunset Drive without a garage. I live next to the house, 13, that has the garage in front of the house to the side of my property. I don't find that to be a detriment to my property or the quality or enhancement of my property. They're wonderful neighbors and the work that they've done in the house from when I looked at it to buy it to now has been extraordinary. And I think that anything they do will only enhance their property and enhance the neighborhood. And I fully support this proposal to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, either for or against the application? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Mr. Cromer, do you have any final words for the application?
I don't have, I don't have any.
So deliberation time, guys.
I don't have any issue with this. I appreciate the time that's gone into it to match the existing house. We get a lot of unreasonable requests up here. I don't think this is an unreasonable request for a single-car garage that matches, to a large degree, this property. I know this property well. I'm very good friends with Sonier, still to this day. I've spent a lot of time in this house. So I don't think what they're proposing is any detriment to the neighborhood. The four inches would drive my OCD crazy. But you know that's not really a zoning issue, but. And I would just encourage you to figure out what you're going to do with that two-foot space. Don't try to grow grass there is my only advice, but I have no issue with this application.
Anyone else on the board for comment?
Just trying to improve your house, so, and you're just trying to be able to put more of your two cars in the garage, so understand that, especially in the wintertime, okay? And you're dealing with the space that you have, as your architect said, that's the only way you can do it. So if that's the only way you can do it, that's the only way you can do it, okay? But I commend you for not giving up, okay? So I don't have a problem with it.
Anyone else? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the building of the garage. This is on 9 Sunset Drive.
I'll second.
Can I add the usual standard conditions for the ballpark case? Can I add to the resolution for the process?
Sure.
Sure.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
JJ?
Yes.
And Chairman Avaloni?
Delectantly, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cromer.
Let's take a 10-minute break.
Okay, so I make a motion to take a 10-minute break.
These are turning into nail biter.
Roll calls first?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Let's get back to it.
Okay, roll call.
Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Daniel Harris?
Here.
Natalie Passerini?
Here.
Vice Chair Scully?
Here.
Chairman Avaloni?
Here.
All right, one quick housekeeping issue is the resolution for Summerfield Avenue. And we've held off on this particularly because I was not available for one of the meetings that was John Scully was, and he was discussing this particular resolution with the rest of the board. So in order for it to be a little more consistent, I'm going to ask John to review some of the things that were discussed.
Jack, can you refresh my memory? This was the one where?
This was Summerfield Avenue.
Andy Karas is.
They made for interpretation?
Right, with the, yeah, the interpretation and there was, it was about the parking, right? Whether we were going to add in the parking? And my opinion was is that by doing that, we were exceeding.
Whether or not the site name was.
Right, right. So my position was is that by adding in that parking element, we were exceeding what our review was of the.
Ordinance.
The ordinance. Now, Donna, I know you took the opposite position of that.
I'm not listening. My understanding of what we discussed is what you said, is that we weren't adding parking into what we were saying.
Right.
It was discussed multiple times and argued, but that was not what we decided. We were not including that.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and I narrowly defined the scope of the approval in the resolution. I tried to keep it within the four corners of what you have discussed.
Correct.
Not getting into extremities.
Right, right. Which I thought was better for the board and better for our review of the application. So are we all set on approving that?
Yeah, that would be the one.
That would be the original resolution prepared by Jack without the comments that were added.
That would be the original resolution, and I omitted out of the original resolution characterization of what Donna said, because that's not what she said. And I took that out. The rest of it stayed the same.
Correct.
So I'm in agreement that we should approve the resolution the way it was originally written by Jack without the comments regarding parking.
I'll second that.
Resolution by press.
For 807 Summerfield Avenue.
And then members that are eligible are Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
John Scully?
Yes.
And Chairman Avaloni?
Yes. All right, that clears up all of our housekeeping issues. We can get on with 1103 Drummond Avenue. Mr. Steinberg, welcome back.
Yeah, for the record, before you start, Wendy, you are not in attendance on December the 10th. You have reviewed the transcript, video transcript of that meeting and are fully prepared to participate in vote, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I will forward a certification to that. Good enough?
Nothing.
Yeah, 520.
That's fine. And you've also asked us to renotice for the meeting in August?
Yes, and Jeff was here and he saw, he saw that included. And then you were carried to this date without further notification requirement, correct?
We're prepared to proceed, hopefully conclude the session. Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Just so we could have a little understanding where we were, can you give us a quick synopsis? Absolutely. First of all, Mark Steinberg, on behalf of the applicants, Mr. Lammer, some Mr. Gary. And this is a situation that we came before you about six, eight weeks ago? December 2024.
December.
24.
December 10th of 24.
It was a situation where the applicants, owners of the house, developed the property and put in, installed a pool and a pool house and various other amenities and association therewith. And they had applied for permits and received plumbing permits and electric permits and they were all closed out. And it turned out on the final submission that they had violated some of the plans and they had violated some of the setback requirements as a result of those plans. We discussed some of the major ones with you in December and we believe that some of them were somewhat acceptable to the board at that time for purposes of granting variances. Have there been any remediations to the property? I was just going to say, what you had said to us is that, how are you going to fix this? Please come back to us with a plan. Please come back to us with a plan of how you're going to fix this. Don't do any work. You sort of indicated not to do anything, not to change anything until the board approved it. So because my clients go to Florida and I was in Florida. We couldn't make it back until the end of April and we got together in May and then we set the meeting day for August, at which time we submitted some remediation documents, packets that the board should have with some pictures. And I wrote a letter on July 17th going over each of the variances and requirements thereof and how we're going to remediate them. I had a chance to speak with your planner and we went back and forth and we're here tonight to go over those items and see what, if anything, can satisfy the board. My clients want to tell you that they have no, they had no intention of just going, you know, helter-skelter and putting in what they wanted. They dealt with professionals, they dealt with the construction department. Maureen, someone Maureen from the construction department, as well as Mary Ann, I believe, was the zoning officer at the time.
Right, she's gone.
I know, and, you know, they thought that they were somewhat compliant and no fault of their own. I think what happened was they left the construction to people in the construction business who certainly at times do not respect the plans and put in what they want to put in or just don't measure correctly or just do what they can. And that's what left us in this situation. Okay, so if we can, maybe we can go over planner's letter, Donna's letter. And I went off of your letter, Donna, of August 4th to 25th, when I wrote my July 17th letter.
Yeah, I'm actually trying to find the July 17th letter. I just saw it. I thought I saw it.
Okay. And we try to go down item by item to see how we can satisfy the board and do some changes in order to get a final approval of some sort. I can go over it verbally and Peter can testify. You want to have Peter sworn in?
Go on, sir. Trying to find Donna's most recent report.
Donna's most recent report is August 4th. Is updated through August 4th to 25th. It's pretty much similar to her other report because we didn't change anything.
Okay.
On advice of.
Not much, yes.
All right, well, I have the other one.
On advice of the chairman, I think he told us, come back with a plan. Don't do anything.
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, so that's what we wanted to do.
Let's swear in the witnesses. Sir, can you raise your hand?
Oh, sorry, me too?
You solemnly swear in firm with testimony about to give this matter to the truth, all the truth and the evidence of the truth.
I do.
I do.
Will you state your name for the record in the spot?
Sir, Henry Peter Lammers, L-A-M-M-E-R-S.
Gary.
For the record, I just go by Peter, I'm in Atlanta, so it's confusing. Thanks for the, to my parents.
L-A-M-N?
L-A-M-M-E-R-S.
Thank you.
Donna Miller, board planner.
All right, this is yours.
Peter, you own the house together with your partner?
With my husband, Ed Gary, who's also in attendance.
Pauline?
Yes, with my husband, Ed Gary, who's also.
Gary's, and he is sitting behind us.
Edward M. Gary is sitting beside us.
He's here, and the board wants to hear from him. All right, your summary is not changed. It's.
No, so the, yeah.
Nothing has changed. And I guess we got to the required variances as to the accessory structures. And let me just ask this, let me, my letter, I don't know if the board has it, July 17th?
We do.
Good, that makes it easier. So I can just ask a few questions of Peter, okay? The pad for the shed?
Yes.
When you bought the house, what was there?
There's a concrete 10-by-10 cement pad with approximately eight-by-eight, like rubber-made shed.
And the shed that you had constructed, is it on the same pad?
It's in the same location. Just to be clear, the pad, the cement pad was removed. It was replaced with pea gravel and the shed was placed on the exact location of the former concrete pad.
So basically the shed is, the new shed is in the same place as the old shed?
That's correct.
Okay. And you realize that it's 1.9 feet from the repurposed line and you need three?
Well, I do now. I did not realize that when it was being built. No one advised of anything around the setbacks.
All right, did you get a building permit for it?
I did not.
I'm sorry, whose response was?
Did not.
I'm sorry, I thought I'm not speaking up. There was not a building permit pulled for the shed.
Okay.
Permits were pulled for electric and plumbing as Counselor Steinberg has referenced.
Okay. Tell us about the adjacent property behind the shed next to, I guess it's the side of the house?
The property that borders us on the northwest, southwest is Jim McMillan's property. He's been there for, I think he grew up on the same block. We have a good relationship with Jim. He regrets that he wasn't able to attend it. He's working. We did discuss the placement of all of these plans, in particular because the fence that was replaced was in fact his fence. There was a chain link fence. We wanted to make sure that he was approved. He was accepted, the new fence going in because it's essentially replacing this.
Okay, and it's on his property?
It is on his property.
And is there any growth between the back of the shed and the fence?
On our side of the property, no.
On his side?
On his side, Mr. McMillan did put in a row of emerald green or lighting alongside the fence.
Now, the outdoor kitchen was installed by your contractors at 2.8 feet instead of three feet?
That's correct, and it was unbeknownst us in all honesty. We were not aware that it was approaching the setback.
So all of those setbacks were still.
Okay, 2.8 feet with three feet is required, so it's point, is that point oh two? Feet?
Yeah, okay.
Is that, is that right? Is it point oh two? Any mathematicians?
Point two.
Point oh two, a point two.
Point two.
Okay, it's point two feet. The pool heater is set at 3.5 feet and Donna indicates that meets the three foot somehow. Send your letter.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm reading through, under zoning compliance in my letter, that's page, sorry, three. I outline the requirements for each of the different types of structures. So under the pool heater setback, technically that is.
Compliant.
Compliant.
Okay, so no variances needed there, okay? Now, the patio, what's the patio consists of?
The patio consists of pavers. Not sure what else I can elaborate on that.
All right, and that is again, 2.8 feet with three feet should be a setback.
That's our understanding now, when we were working.
And that is all enclosed within the rear yard, within the fencing?
That is correct.
Empty enclosure?
That is correct.
Now, we went back and forth on the forever lawn synthetic grass system with the engineer at the last hearing. And he found that that was compliant drainage-wise. I understand you now have an ordinance?
Not yet.
Oh, you're about to have an ordinance?
We may have an ordinance.
An ordinance. You're about to have an ordinance. But I don't think that's an issue here because that would, the issue was whether or not we have a sufficient or deficient lot coverage. And, you know, lot coverage, we need a lot coverage variance. And your engineer said, no, the drainage was satisfactory and it was pervious. So that has been eliminated, okay? Now, we have, the next one is an interesting one. The wall height is eight feet.
Correct? Sorry, please clarify what you're referring to as the wall.
The decorative wall.
Thank you. So there's, yes, there's, so the wood wall that borders the west side of the property is seven feet, not eight feet.
Okay.
We're reducing it by two boards.
Correct, each board is six inches.
Six inches, okay. We understand that there's a six-foot maximum permitted.
So you're going to reduce that, you're going to reduce?
We would, we would request the board, we'd like to reduce it by two boards.
And it's seven now, you said, seven or 7.9?
Correct.
Okay, I always thought it was eight, okay. So it's seven feet and if we reduce it, each board is half?
Six inches.
So then you would be down to six feet?
Six foot, three inches, as, as measured from the grade of the patio to the proposed last board of the wall.
I'm mistaken on that and I defer to Peter because he's more familiar. We would, I guess we would need a variance for six feet, three inches. Because then if you're measuring the same way, it's seven feet, three inches.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt.
I'm getting a little confused now.
So, so in your materials, this was the, I think the original submission of all the.
Yeah, I thought it was eight feet.
Yeah, September 24th. The picture, it's page three, wood fence wall detail. So that's that horizontal panel, board, wall, between the shed and the, and the kitchen. It says the height of the wood wall is 88 inches and that's seven feet, three inches.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, seven feet, three inches. And we'd like to bring it down instead of six feet, we ask for variance for.
6.3, six, six feet, three inches.
Six feet, three inches, only because then we don't have to cut into the next board. And it would be our position that visually, that difference is probably extremely.
Deminimus? Just for, just for clarification, and it's probably hard for you to see that, but we're talking this, this wood wall?
If I might, so it's both, so there is a cedar wall, horizontal, I'm trying to use Mr. Miller's description. There is a cedar horizontal.
Right.
Wall, and then there is the white encasement.
Where the kitchen is.
Three inches, and we're proposing to grant them both.
And they're all the same height?
That is correct.
And you're going to bring them all down to six, three?
Six foot, three inches.
The maximum permitted is six feet and we need a variance of six, three. If you can, if you can't grant that, we'd have to give.
Yeah.
We can get down to the six, but we don't prefer not to, I think.
Why?
Yeah, you're right.
You're saying that, oh, I'm sorry, am I answering a question nobody asked?
No, I want to know why you don't want to cut off three inches?
We don't want to cut off the three inches.
No, I'm asking why don't you want to do it?
Why won't we?
Why don't we?
We, if the board doesn't want to give us the six feet, three inch variance, we'll bring it down to six feet.
I would prefer that.
It's simply, just to answer the question, it's simply because of the, where the boards start and finish. So it made for a more convenient, shall we say, way for the contractor to reduce the height of the wall without cutting through and restructuring. So that was the only measure, that was the proposed proposal for the board's consideration.
Yeah. Retaining wall, I think we discussed that last time? The combination of the retaining wall and the fence exceeds your requirement. The fence is only four feet. Height, the retaining wall makes it seven at one point where it goes down. We would submit respectfully that A, the retaining wall is necessary to protect this property as well as the adjacent properties. We have had no problems since the retaining wall has been in place. A, B, the, it tapers down, it tapers up, so that there is a. What is the height of the fence on the retaining wall? The height is at the level that I have it here is.
Page four, retaining wall setback, sorry.
This is the fence that goes around the front and side of the property, correct? Out by the right of way?
So the Drummond side.
Metal picket fence.
What was that, Mr. Lammers?
It's the, the retaining wall system is on the Drummond Avenue side of the property. The aluminum, I think picket is the way you describe it, fence is on top of that.
With a total of height of?
Seven something.
It says 7.9 on the bottom sheet screen.
At the highest point, and that's the corner of Drummond Avenue and our driveway.
If I'm correct, Donna, isn't the fence supposed to be set back from the retaining wall?
That's also, yeah, a requirement within that one too.
So I thought, my notes indicate that that was discussed back and forth and that wasn't a substantial concern.
No, the board didn't say that. I watched the video today. There was that discussion, but there was no conclusion that the board said they were not concerned about that.
So it's a.
Didn't you say one way or another?
Okay, I thought. Three and a half foot high metal picket fence on top of the still retaining wall, which is variable height as you go from north to south, south to north. It's highest inside the driveway, not near the street. And then it tapers down as you go toward.
The total, the total length of the aluminum fence is, any idea?
I don't, off the top of my head.
The total length?
The, for the Drummond Avenue, I'm sorry, I don't have that. You may have it here.
So this is the Drummond Avenue, so this would be this dimension? I hate the property, so it's about.
The fence is, Donna, the fence is mounted to the top of the retaining wall?
No, it's on top of the retaining wall.
It's on.
It is, sorry for clarification if I might, it is not mounted directly on the retaining wall. It is directly behind the retaining wall, put in, most as you would.
Together. Thank you.
Who put in the retaining wall?
The retaining wall and the fence was contracted through Celtic Concepts. Mark Metal, not Mark Metal, I'm trying to translate to Napolitano.
By you, when you redeveloped the property?
Yeah, correct. We, as a part of the pool patio project, these are the improvements that we put in in concert with the pool.
Were there permits for the fence in the retaining wall?
Yes, yes, they were.
And they were approved by the town?
Yes, they were. That was our understanding because we have what Celtic Concepts submitted in the original plan, which was.
Do you have those permits, Mr. Lammers?
I don't know that I, well, I have all the permits that were things like plumbing, electrical. But I'm not aware if there was a tag or a permit on.
Well, you're saying that it was approved by the city. Do you have copies of that to show us?
I do not. It was on word of Celtic Concepts that it was submitted. I have copies of what I signed off on with a profile of.
So you don't know for certain that?
So I think there was some.
I have emailed correspondence between Celtic Concepts.
I think we asked you that the last time and we asked you to bring those with you. But you don't have any of that?
I don't, I don't, I'm not aware that I have those. I can certainly.
But I particularly remember asking you for those things.
So I'm sorry that that wasn't in the notes for a problem.
I missed that too.
You had it, Donna?
So I was just going to say, I think the, okay, I have a copy of the zoning permit in the application. The application contains the zoning permit that was issued. I think there was maybe a misunderstanding that the retaining wall, like maybe the retaining wall wasn't part of, you know, the understanding that it's with the fence. Because the zoning permit has a condition that says all fencing must be installed at least one foot from any right of way.
Well, you can't mix with the statement that the city approves something.
Let, let, let's hear this, let's hear this.
Yeah, so install in-ground pool, paver patio, outdoor bathroom, outdoor shower, landscaping and four-foot-high open picket fencing as shown on plot plan. And then there were conditions about, you know, the setbacks for the various things. Um, I don't have as part of this package the plot plan that was included, but there was no retaining wall noted as part of the zoning permit. So I think maybe originally the idea was, you know, we can make, we can grade it out, we'll just put the fence, but at some point, maybe they decided they needed the retaining wall and didn't think to...
Who decided, you, you decided, Mr. Lammers?
No, if I, if I might, the conversations, and I, I don't wanna sidestep your question, we do, I do not have a copy of the, the approved permits. We were going on the word of Celtic Concepts, that's what I know, I can certainly go back and search for those permits, but, um, so...
But you can't state to me that it was approved by the city?
Again, the, what's in your packet is the approved zoning permit, there's two of them, one signed by Mark Siegel, who was the zoning officer before Mary Ann.
Right.
And then the other one is Mary Ann signed off, neither one indicates a retaining wall, just the fencing.
So then we have no proof that that was ever approved by the city, is that correct? Am I understanding that correct?
Did you always anticipate to do a retaining wall?
Always, in every estimate.
So I don't know why that wasn't included in the scope of work that was noted on the permit.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Thank you.
And we don't have a copy of the plot plan that was submitted with that?
I don't, but it's probably, you know, upstairs. Um, but I mean, it's...
I'm, I'm just trying to help the situation, i- if you make a statement to me that something was approved by the city, I, I'm certainly going to say not, deny that request, or, or deny that it was approved, if that was the case, then show me, and, and I could understand the situation. Maybe I can rephrase the question, sorry, you had contracted out with Celtic Concepts, right?
That is correct.
And they had chosen what they were going to do?
That's correct.
And they said they were taking in all, getting all the permits from the city?
That was our understanding.
And you're understanding they received the appropriate permits?
That's correct.
And they lived in accordance with the plans that were submitted?
That was our understanding.
That was our standing.
I, I get that part, I, I understand that part, Mr. Steinberg.
This is pure hearsay, you're talking about what he said to them, he has nothing, there, there's nothing, there's no evidence.
No proof that the city gave a permit for that?
Correct, there's no, there's no empirical evidence, what sort of data that supports the position that the city proved it, that's the simple issue.
I, I, I agree with that, and that's why I seem to rephrase it, he was under the assumption...
I get, we know that, we, we...
Paying a lot of money to Celtic, and they took everything. Many construct, construction companies say the same thing, Mr. Steinberg, but do they actually go ahead and do those things, right? And I, I can understand Mr. Lammers' position, I'm just trying to get at the, the bottom of this, and how we, how we address it.
So one item of note is that the zoning permit was issued to the applicant, which was Celtic Concepts, not...
Not Mr. Lammers?
The property owners.
Right.
Yeah, so Celtic Concepts was the one that obtained this...
So they, they may be guilty of not, but unfortunately, Mr. Lammers, you have to deal with it. We have to deal with it, I don't know if there is a, a remedy at this juncture, other than tearing up the whole thing and changing the total topography.
What was, what was there before the retaining wall, was there an older retaining wall, or it was just created down?
On the driveway side, which is on the right, as you look at the house, there was a retaining wall, uh, because the grade was quite steep. On the Drummond side, going towards Third Avenue, there was no retaining wall, it was simply a slope, uh, down to the sidewalk.
Okay, and moving the fence off the retaining wall, moving that back a foot, is not gonna, it, you're not gonna be able to sink it down any lower, correct? It's still gonna be a four-foot fence, right? I'm trying to, I'm just trying to see if we can...
Yeah, wait, the ordinance is worded right now, it would have to be set back five feet, not in the total height.
Five feet from the retaining wall?
Yeah. Uh, alright.
Which is why we're changing that.
Forget my question.
If you were to set it back five feet, it would still be the same height?
In, in...
As you go up, it's higher, isn't it?
That's, that's correct, because, because of the natural grade of the property, which hasn't been altered.
So the fence is still higher than six feet, correct?
I'm sorry, I couldn't...
There is a fence that is still higher than six feet, correct?
If it were to be moved back, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir. How, the fence is four feet.
The fence is, the fence...
Three and a half.
Is, is the standard of the pool required fence, so do I, am I characterizing that correctly?
Right, and with the retaining wall, it's seven point nine feet?
When, when you count them both?
When you count them both, as we have to by the ordinance, if you move it back five feet, is what you're telling us, based on the topography of, of the lot, that that fence would actually visually, it would actually be higher than the seven point nine?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
That, that's something we, we're asking for variance for.
I think you've also asked for street trees?
So every application is required to, if you don't have them, either make a contribution or put them in, so that's just a standard development requirement?
Obviously, if you tell us what to plant, we will? That, that's up to the Environmental Shade Tree Committee, Mr. Steinberg, we, we don't particularly tell you what tree to plant. But we are certainly more than willing to either plant street trees or contribute to the street, street tree fund, uh, as required. You know, I think that you, how many feet between the curb and the sidewalk?
Um, excuse me, on the Drummond Avenue side is approximately two feet from the sidewalk to the curb.
I don't know if that's the appropriate place for street trees, or the development street trees, but whatever they, the environmental commission requests will comply.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, but that's not a problem. Then you asked about the light, can you tell us what we have, how many fixtures?
I have, there are three fixtures in the area, two over the outdoor kitchen, one is attached to the shed. Both, all three of the lights are, um, open gla, are glass enclosure, um, they are with four-watt LED lights that are the warmer lumens, I'm gonna say thirty-six hundred, but I, I don't have the exact number, um, they are all on a dimmer, um...
Are they directed to your property?
They are directed, well, they're open fixtures, as you can see in the, the photo, they're glass, so essentially, I think what...
That's, that's kind of the problem with standard, yeah.
Yeah, that the, the spillover of the current fixtures, uh, might be, or might not, might be, is, is not within your limits, if I...
We have no problem in changing those fixtures to compliant fixtures.
Excellent.
That, that we certainly can, we can certainly do, then you also asked about the area that comes off where we have gravel on the right of way?
On the avenue.
That's on Third, uh, yes, Third Avenue.
Um, we, it, it, what is that area used for?
It's purely, so the area that's being described is a access gate, uh, four-foot to gate, access gate, we installed it purely in case we would ever need to have equipment in there, because on the other side of the property, there's five steps. So that was the rationale for the installation of that, we put large gravel or rock, just both aesthetically and to be able to have access should we need access. Um, wasn't imagined that that would be a violation, but again, we're, or they happen to make...
We would have no problem in changing that to either mulch or some other type of ground cover that you may suggest, and eliminating that situation.
Um, so, um, the city has taken the position that, um, loose gravel, pebbles, that type of decorative stone in the, in the front yard area where it can't be retained behind a, like, curbing or edging, um, you know, just creates a problem. Gets kicked into the sidewalk, it gets all over the place.
Gets spread onto the rodent wave.
Yeah, so, um...
We have no problem.
I, I'm not sure what is gonna be acceptable, uh, we would confer with Michelle Alonso to determine what...
But we would place it with some sort of ground cover or, or mulch, or something that would be more satisfactory, that's not a problem, you know, a fine request. And I guess the, the last thing that, that you brought up, by the way, that eliminates one, one point two-five percent, gives us more appropriate coverage.
Okay.
Uh, permit's covered, uh, there, there's a comment of your, your engineer in his letter, that when we do that, it changes to the benefit of the town.
Understood.
And the adjacent properties, the last thing you talked about is that we have drainage going over the sidewalk, okay? What happened, why, why did you do it that way?
On the corner of the home that is south-facing, there was an existing, or there is an existing gutter with a downspout. In discussing with the contractors where that water would go after construction, we installed the drainage, drainage tile, um, to go across the property line, which is parallel with the driveway, to come out on the Drummond Avenue side, to avoid water, you know, either going back on our neighbor's property or coming into the pool.
Yeah, we don't have a problem with the fact that you're draining, um, you need to provide drainage from behind that retaining wall. Um, it, it makes sense, it's just that we don't want it going across the sidewalk, you should pipe it under the sidewalk and have it come out, so it goes into the gutter rather than across the sidewalk, because it just becomes a, you know, freezing hazard, the, yeah.
We couldn't open the street at that point, right?
Well, it's, it's the, the sidewalk, we'd have to pull up the sidewalk and go through the curb.
If it's...
Well, it's a soft cut, and...
So...
We, if it has to be done, we'll do that, we also suggested, and I know the engineer's unavailable tonight, that we would put it in a drywall.
That's, that's his call, I don't know that you need that, but, uh, we have no problem with discharging to the right of way for these types of things, that's generally acceptable. Um, it's just that we don't like going across the sidewalk.
Especially when it freezes, I, I do understand.
When you're in Florida, the rest of us are up here watching for ice sidewalks.
We would certainly do either the drainage under the sidewalk, or drywall, whichever the engineer feels can be the most appropriate. The engineer's report.
Before we go on to that, was, and I don't know if my memory is correct or not, was there an issue with the height of the, the roof on the shed at the highest point? I, I remember talking about that.
We discussed it the last week, it went...
It's not cited?
That's wrong, I'll find out for now.
Yeah.
Hey, I think so, yes.
Fence height?
Well...
Retaining wall, it's, oh, what happened to the shed?
Do you know what the height of the shed is? It's got foot, ten feet.
I think that's a compliance. An accessory structure?
Yeah, um, they're permitted fifteen for an accessory structure as maximum height, uh, it's ten, right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, uh, we put that out of here, that's good, that's good, that's the same, that's the same. Yeah, I, I never...
Maybe, maybe we just asked for the height was, and that's what's sticking in my head?
Whatever the report said.
Most importantly, what happened to the artificial shading that you had around the fences?
Uh, what you're describing is the wind fence, who's a black semi-opaque, uh, fence that we put in on the black picket fence while the landscaping was growing in, for a little bit of privacy, that has been removed, uh, per the request to remove, the la, at the red last meeting.
That's gone. Okay, so we certainly did agree on that. Your engineer's report is July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, which addresses all the same variances, um, but he did ask a few questions, which, uh, Peter can answer at this point. And tell us about the storm runoff, si, si, after you put the pool in, did you have any drainage problems?
We did not.
Now, have the appropriate structures been erected, to your knowledge, for drainage of the rear of the property where the, the, um, pool is, anything else?
To the best of my knowledge.
Where does it go?
Um, so to clarify, you're speaking of the rear property on between, uh, on the west side?
Right.
I just wanna make sure...
Right, so the, the leaders and gutters of the house are directed towards the street?
That is correct, that was...
Except there is one that goes through the same piping we just talked about?
That is correct.
And that will be...
Be routed underneath the sidewalk?
Or, or whichever the engineer prefers. Prefer, um, and that's the only, other than that, the drainage is offsite?
We've had, we've had no drainage issues, um, our neighbor, Mr. McMillan, hasn't cited any drainage, drainage issues coming onto his property.
And you, there, there was no additional runoff as a result of the construction? It's the same as it was?
No, there's none.
Going towards the street?
Or being, uh, absorbed into...
You have no pooling, no ponding, no flooding?
That's correct, there has been no...
To that effect, okay, um, downspout locations, um, direct the run, direct the runoff to the street?
That's correct, for all the rest of the house structure, nothing changed as it relates to those gutter systems.
And then he's, he's indicating, the engineer is, is, he'd like testimony that the runoff does not flow off the property onto the neighbor's?
That is correct.
Doesn't, doesn't exist at that point. So where we're at, basically, is we're still at the mercy of the board, um, seeking some variances for the setbacks, which are point-two-feet off in several locations, except for the, the shed, which has a, a little closer, um, that's because it's constructed in the same place as the prior shed was constructed. And, uh, the fence and the retaining wall, the balance, I think we could, you know, mitigate, um, we would like to just take off two boards, to bring it down to six foot, three. If that's not satisfactory to the board, we'll make it six feet. I, I'm not, uh, adverse to the six point three, I am adverse to the retaining wall and the fence on, that's in conjunction with that retaining wall. That's my biggest objection at this point, um, I'm not sure how to remediate that situation, other than to say that the fence needs to be set back five feet. But you are, I understand, we'll see how we can mitigate that, but I understand that the ordinance is gonna be changing from less than five feet. We're also changing ordinances for the astroturf, and so, let's not talk about changing ordinances. Is there, if we move, is, if we move the fence less than five, I mean, what it is, is obviously cutting into the, to the usable area of the backyard by moving the fence, so is there a compromise there that we could resolve to satisfy this?
We just compromised six feet, from six feet to six-three, so, you know, we compromised, we gave into that, so why do we wanna compromise something that is actually much more important?
Well, the one, um, consideration as you look at this, uh, site plan, and I do not have measurements, so this would have to go back and be considered. Uh, the fence would roughly be about two feet off the pool, on that side. Again, an estimate, I need to go back and make actual measurements, the part of the, the consideration or complication of five feet off of the retaining wall is that we need to investigate whether there is enough of a walkway around that side of the Drummond Avenue side of the pool, that makes sense.
Donna, can you help in this situation, is there...
I, I'm gonna try and make a, take a...
This is where I'm hung up on, yeah.
So, and again, it's not for the full length, because, as we said, it tapers down, um, uh, all right, what's the scale?
That's correct. And just because you move the fence back doesn't mean that that part of the yard is, is not usable, you just, it's just on the other side of the fence. Which I, 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 I get, right? But, but it's not... But it's not like we're walling off five feet of your yard that you can't use anywhere.
The consideration is then how far is the fence from the pool? Would we need to get that measurement of how feasible is that? We didn't come prepared, I didn't come prepared to discuss that.
All right, so here we go. So this is the.
How much of this can we settle tonight? Because it's obvious you're going to have to come back again.
Pardon me?
How much of this can we settle tonight?
Yeah, that's what we're looking for.
So you, there's a coping around the pool on the Drummond side that's not shown on a survey. So I'm not sure how, how wide that is. But it is, you have.
Well, if, first of all, we move the fence together.
There is twelve feet.
Well.
Twelve and a half feet between the fence and the edge of the pool. So you'd be splitting the difference, you know, five feet, seven feet, inside, outside. Is the, because it's on the Drummond side that you find it offensive? Because they really can't move it on the driveway side. It would be, in order to do that, it would be in the pool.
It just seems like a huge fortress.
So if it's the Drummond side, that's more concerned, okay. So let me see, so I don't have, yes, top of walls.
The top is the driveway.
That's correct.
That has to stay.
And yet for safety purposes.
Well, that's like three or four feet from the.
Yeah.
So.
And between the fence and its current position and the landscaping, that's probably roughly three feet. And then again, we need to get some measurements to know. Because I don't want to misspeak or give the board incorrect information.
So are you actually saying, Mr. Lambers, you want to come back?
Well, if the, I prefer to request a variance or have a proposal to put it on the other side, on the pool side, to move the fence on the pool side of the landscaping, which is existing.
We just don't know how, why is that big?
Oh, okay, I might be able to figure that out.
And those, the current landscaping is at the height of the fence today. There are skip laurels, so might soften it if that's what the board is in consideration for.
Yeah, we would move the fence to the other side of the landscaping?
On the, if a variance is not available to us, the proposal that I would put on the table is to move it on the pool side, move the fence to the pool side at the highest point, if that's the biggest concern.
But Donna, what do you think?
It looks like it would be three or four feet.
I'm hesitant to say anything at this point because I don't have this in front of me. And it's hard to visualize. And I want to be able to help you in this situation, Mr. Lambers, but it's hung up on me. I'm trying to get by it.
So again, is the thing that you find egregious, the idea or what it actually looks like?
Both.
I agree with the chairman, I think, I, so I live on Fourth, I know your house very well, I walk past it all the time. I'm six foot one, and when I walk by, even though I can see through the fence, it's very high. And so it's, it's both to me, as it is with the chairman.
So again, if they move the fence to the inside of the landscaping, you're going to have a hedge that high.
That's green, but landscaping is much different than a fortress.
Okay, I don't know if that's sufficient to make a decision, but we would move it to the other side of the landscape.
Do we, do you have a plot plan that we can see where, or that, I'm assuming that's what you're looking at, Donna, just trying to get the measurements?
Do you have any other photographs by any chance?
Sure. I think in the original package.
Mine or yours?
The original application package. There's a picture along the front, there's a picture like looking down the fence line from the driveway. What are we trying to find?
Just a more accurate, yeah. Yeah, like, so I'm assuming there's a bed of mulch with landscaping before the grass starts and then the pool?
May I?
Yeah, it's a bunch of shrubs.
I may have.
So we would just be putting it behind the shrubs? And that's approximately three or four feet?
Here's the fence.
Yeah, again, there's skip laurels, they have the potential to get very large.
They do.
Yeah, we don't want them to be that large.
But they take pruning well. And so, but yeah, you'd have a, an evergreen hedge in line with the retaining wall. You wouldn't see a fence.
It would be much more attractive to.
I mean, the fence is open, so essentially you're seeing, I'm looking for pictures to see if I can.
Yeah, and the pictures in the package include the, have the wind screening attached, so that it seems darker and more solid than it, than it really is.
This is probably the best.
Do I have that one? That one?
I mean, we don't have a dimension from if we move the fence to the other side of the.
No, it's five. You know, the standard is five feet.
So where are we looking here?
A three foot wide hedge.
These are the laurels.
Is a fair standard dimension.
Retaining wall laurels.
It would provide sufficient visual.
That's a lot more attractive.
Because even though you can see through.
Does this look like a fortress to me?
It's still a significant fence, even though you can see through it, in my opinion. Danny, you want to see?
I'll show it to you.
I'm familiar.
You're good?
Yeah.
The laurels up to the right.
To the comment that I had is, even though you can see through the fence, it's still a significant metal structure where if it was the landscaping in front of the fence, in my opinion, I think would be a softer approach.
What I was thinking, sideboard with the planner.
Thank you, Mr. Lambers.
With your planner. And she's indicating if we get through this tonight, we could agree to move the fence at least three feet from its current location, and maybe more to the other side of the landscaping hedge.
I think that would soften the look a lot.
I would be fine with that.
Ben, how do you feel?
It's all good.
Now, how do you feel?
That's it. It gets to the three of us.
I don't, I don't have a problem with how it is right now.
Okay.
So maybe we can reiterate what we need and what we can do.
Okay.
Because I think we're a little confused.
That would be helpful, Mr. Lambers.
You know, so we need a variance for the shed at one point nine feet from the property line. We need an outdoor kitchen variance for two eight, where three feet is required. We need, don't need the pool heater, we need the patio, again, two eight, where three feet is required. We're okay with lot coverage. The wall height, we would reduce to six foot three by taking off two boards.
Hold on one second.
Oh, I'll go slower. What do you have to, Jack?
The wall height to six three, still requires a variance for the three inches.
Yes, we would ask for that.
Actually, it's point three, it's not three inches.
No.
Six point three, I thought it was.
No, no, it's three inches.
Three inches?
It's currently seven three. If we move two boards, six inches each, that's a foot, so it comes down to six three.
Understood.
Okay. Retaining wall, we just discussed, and we would move the fence along Drummond Avenue a minimum of three feet, if not more, so it comes on the other side of the.
The laurels.
The laurels. Street trees as directed by.
Environmental Safety Committee.
Environmental Commission. Lighting, you want us to replace the fixtures with compliant fixtures?
That's up to them.
Well.
I would, yeah.
To me, there's spillage onto your neighbors.
Okay, and we're bringing the wall down, so it may be necessary. We have no problem with that.
I understand.
We don't want to ask, we don't want you to tell us to move the pool. So we can do three light fixtures and.
Let me just clarify, so the metal fence.
Along Drummond?
Is only along Drummond.
And they're probably going to have to chamfer the corner in some manner to bring it down because the one on the driveway side is necessary.
Right, but that's, I don't see the problem there.
Well, it goes into the front yard of Drummond.
It's where it's gonna tie in on third because that's the corner and it's a normal span, so you may be in the middle of that, that section.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to maybe chamfer that corner.
You might need an extra post.
Okay, well, fence people will pay up to this, okay? You good with this?
What is the, so to, like.
So hang on a second, so we're not worried about the height along the side of the driveway? We're only care about the Drummond side?
Okay, so we're talking about the fence along the Drummond, and we're going to move that fence a minimum of three feet.
To the inside of the.
So it's inside of the planting bed. So it would grant the board some relief at visual, and it would still permit you to have full access and use of the rear yard, which you're not going to.
I'm assuming your laurels are going to cover the fence anyway, so.
Yeah, they're kind of doing that right now. We're trying to hack them back to make sure that they stay.
I don't know.
It's a regular chore for us.
All right, but the fence people will figure it out, get you from one end, one height to the next.
Yeah, I, yes, I.
We'll get there.
I need to assess to your point of the corner, the driveway corner, which is the, one of the original photos I think I submitted.
Right.
Just to describe, if this is, this is prior to.
Well, you can hook it up.
Wind fence.
Two feet up or two moves on the corner.
So that's part of the driveway here, is how the fence ties into the driveway. Logistically, I don't know.
Well, the fence may start, the fence may have to tee into that somewhere.
I'm sure your fence people will figure it out.
Yeah, still, or we can chamfer it, we'll figure something out. We're talking about the fence along Drummond to be, that, Jack, the definition? Minimum of three feet, if not more, so that comes to the other side of the planting beds of the laurels. Street trees as directed will give you a compliant lighting fixtures and will submit the catalog cuts to the planner.
And you'll work with the engineer for the runoff?
Well, and then the other, the.
The drainage questions.
The drainage questions.
Well, before the drainage, we're talking about the changing the stones to an approved.
Right.
Over there, is that, that's environmental again.
Well, that's Michelle's office.
Michelle's office as to.
It could be the engineer as well, wouldn't it, Donna, or no?
So I think once.
He has to handle what's going on.
I think once, if we have received an approval and if we receive a resolution, then we could say to them, how do we comply with this?
Okay.
And let them make the determination. They'll give us, you know, we'll get a fixture cut and if Michelle says it's fine or the engineer, we'll go from there. The same thing for what type of planting we'll put on the, remove the stones. And the last thing would be that we're going to either come under the sidewalk with that drainage or drywall again, which is ever more cost effective and more acceptable to your engineer.
No, I don't care about the cost, I care about it's acceptable.
Well, if the engineer doesn't care which one.
That's a different story.
That's what I meant, that's what I meant. Whatever's both cost effective and approvable by the engineer.
Engineer says he doesn't care, that's wrong.
I have no.
Just in compliance with our engineers.
Yeah.
That, that's.
I get it.
Recommendation, whatever.
We kind of need.
How long are you going to be in town? When do you go to Florida?
November fourteenth.
I don't know if we're going to be compliant until the spring, but.
We have a contractor lined up with the wall so that the light wall and the seat of the wall so that can.
They'll start some of it, but some of it may not.
The fence, I just need to confer because that, I need to go back to the contractor.
Will it be done within a year from the date I get this resolution?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Because the ordinance in Asbury has a problem with variance, it's going to be on a year.
No, it's just that he's going to have to start getting fence fixed. He probably can't do that till the spring when he comes back.
I just want to make sure you're covering that, I appreciate that.
So that's our case.
Are we good?
I think so.
All right, so I have to open it up now to the public to, for questions to, for Mr. Lambers' testimony. Does anybody in the public have any questions for Mr. Lambers? I'm assuming Mr. Gary doesn't, so.
Guessing I don't.
Yes, anyone else? All right, I will open it up now for public comment.
If you remember from the last time, can you just raise your right hand? You were here the last time.
Yeah, yes.
Sound the swear, affirm the testimony about giving this man the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and your address.
Peter Bulo, seventeen oh five Fourth Avenue, I live right around the corner. So, yes, yeah, so overall aesthetically, everything looks aesthetically pleasing today as a neighbor. They've done a lot of work to the property. Understand the obstacles they've been through despite how they got there. If nothing changed today as a neighbor that walks by that house every day, it's more than aesthetically pleasing and fits into the neighborhood, and there is nothing that I would change about it. I think they are being, you know, as compromising as they can to please the zoning board, and I wish that you work with them to the best you can to approve their changes. Thank you.
Thank you. I will close public comment now and move to deliberation for the board. I personally would like to say, I appreciate everything you had to go through, Mr. Lambers, Mr. Gary. I'm sorry we had to get to this situation with you. I appreciate the willingness to make changes that we have asked for. And with the changes that you agreed to make, I'm willing to approve this application at this point.
I echo what the chairman just said, but I truly appreciate when an applicant comes in here and is willing to work with us and understands our position. So thank you for that, and I think at the end of the day, this is a good result for, for you and also for the neighborhood, so I, the recommendations, I have no problem with this application going forward.
Anyone else for comment from the board? All right, so I'll make a motion to approve eleven oh three Drummond with the recommended changes. And do I have a second?
And variances.
And variances, yes.
I'll second.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Scully?
Yes.
Chairman Avaloni?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
On favor, none opposed.
All right.